Charge me 65 bucks.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Verification of meeting notice and adoption of agenda. Has the meeting been noticed? Yes. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome everyone. We'll start, we'll be on item number three. Comments from the audience regarding items for future consideration. Would anyone care to address the board? This is the only time the audience members may comment on future or current agenda items as this is a business meeting. Persons addressing the board are asked to state their name and address for the record and their comments may be limited to only one time and to five minutes. Would anyone like to address the board tonight? Anyone care to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move to recognitions and introductions. Decided to introduce this one. A recognition and introduction of the school forest advisory committee. And who would be up on this?
This is fairly brief. It was just, it's a follow-up to the memo that you had received. You had talked last year about re, or you had voted as a board to repurpose the school for the nature park, we call it the school forest, and you talked about the fact that that enabled us to go after a few grants as well as develop an educational plan. Part of the educational plan needs to incorporate community guidance and really looking at how do we make this a valuable resource not only for our students but for our community as well. In thinking about that, we need the people around the table who, from a variety of walks of life, that can make us aware and bring to our knowledge what is going on in our community and our schools that could be best used. So, tonight we had our very first meeting before this board meeting where we talked a little bit about two different components. We have a management plan for the school forest itself and then an educational plan. And representatives here with us today are Laura Sorelletti, who's K-12 science coordinator, and she's a school forest manager and task force director. So Laura's right back there. Jim Gilroy, who is the overly involved community member from Hales Corners, as well as many other entities, a man of many hats. John Cole, who's our fire chief as well as a parent, who was here earlier this day. Our very own Jonathan Kegel was here a little bit earlier. He'll be back, he said, representing the school board. Matt Karshner, building supervisor. Mike Seeger, who's DNR forester. And Whitaker Long, who was the first, he was the one who came to us last year and came to our site, studied our site, and was responsible for allowing us to really reallocate the ground. So without him, we really couldn't get the ball rolling. Robert Stockinger, Robert is a community member. He's involved with the local chapter and the Hales Corners garden. So he's all about food sustainability and he's going to make our school forest delicious. Amelia Hernandez, art teacher and current user of the school forest, even in its difficult state. Kat Kaiser is actually next door, handing out iPads, but she's representing, she's the ITL area in the district, and her function is to really look at how does technology and nature merge and how can you build those experiences for all of our students. Lastly, Shannon Bradley, science teacher here and parent. And I don't have Jesse Hoita on there. Jesse Hoita was, is not only on the advisory committee but on the task force. And the task force is another group of people who are tasked more specifically with the educational component. So she's kind of wearing two hats and handling all that. So, just wanted to let you all know that the team met tonight and we started our discussion about both management as well as education. Our next steps are to draft an educational plan and get that into their hands so that they can provide feedback if we misread anything or if there was anything that we didn't cover. And moving forward, getting their input and really looking at this partnership with across communities, parents, teachers, and the leadership.
Do any of our committee members have any comments for us? Committee members? No? Okay. Just to give you a chance. Okay. Board questions? Comments?
Just looking, I'm looking forward to seeing how it's going to all play out and how it's going to be used, so.
Laura, did you have something to say?
I do think that's going to make you happy.
Yes, I do. Why don't you share?
I'm looking for somebody to say something.
I'm looking for your input.
Well, I'm excited because Thursday in the afternoon, we'll have the entire staff out in the forest. So it's going to be about 200 people. I want to say we have some stations set up with activities and opportunities for them to learn about how the forest can be used educationally. And then we're all going to come back in. And then we're all going to come back in and we're going to, through using Google Forms, Jesse set up a program where the teachers will be able to input how they think that they can teach a lesson that they currently do, take it outside. So it's not like, let's, you know, try and, you know, do a new curriculum that we're already sort of looking at timing this old curriculum and let's incorporate it to the outdoor. So like Sue Rosenberg, who's a first grade teacher and has to teach counting, she said, what a great place to teach counting. How much more fun would that be? Like, how many butterflies can I count? Or how many, you know, maple trees can I count? So things like that come very simplistic to Jesse and Shannon. And then doing a lot of work with the basic species in our schools. So more complex, more quality studies, there's just a lot of opportunities for us. And Amelia, you're over there.
We went with the artist Andrew Bolsworthy, who does ephemeral art from things that he finds in nature. He does a lot with ice and snow and things like that. And we had had a project that wasn't successful in sculpture, so we talked about how sometimes art doesn't last when it's ephemeral. And then we went out and they made things out of snow and sticks and leaves and we didn't last as long as we thought we would last, but it was a brief sculptural opportunity. And then we came back inside and reflected more on how cold Andrew Bolsworthy must be when he does this for 12 hours. It was great.
So I'm very excited. I'm very excited because when I did this at I don't know where, I felt like I was a lone ranger because this program didn't exist and I was, you know, in summer out there fully reaped by myself and things like that. Having like this community support is great. And so, like having somebody like Matt that can tell me, you know, from a design standpoint, what we can do. And I did work with Mike Seeger when I was at Eisenhower and I know, like, he's just great. He worked with my kids and he would come in when I came. He left younger kids out of the Calmerain State Forest and gave us tours and things. So he really likes people. How many children do you have? Nine? He has nine kids of his own, right?
That's great.
That's correct. And so he's just a wonderful guy to work with and just meeting new people, Robert and John, I think we've got always around the group here. So I'm excited. I'm very positive about this whole thing. And I wouldn't say so, but we will.
Well, thank you very much and thanks to you volunteers. We really appreciate your involvement in this project and we look forward to a better use of the land. I know I see a pretty big 10-point buck wandering around in this area. So it'll be fun to see if you guys spot that too. This huge, huge rack right out there. We've been watching it all summer.
I'm going to shave all my ees.
Yeah, they want, yeah. That's the downside. Cover your gardens. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have our consent agenda, number five. That would include A, approval of staff resignations, B, approval of staff hires, C, approval of the 2014-15 preliminary budget, D, approval of seclusion and restraint report, and E, approval of August vouchers and vouchers payable, F, approval of July 28th, August 11th, and August 13, 2014 school board meeting minutes. This we will vote on with one vote, but before we do, would anyone care to pull a consent agenda item out?
Item C.
Item C, preliminary budget.
I'd like to pull F.
And F, approval of minutes. All right. Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion then to approve the consent agenda, item As, items A, B, D, and E.
So moved.
Moved by Stephanie, seconded by John. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Now we will entertain 5C, approval of the 2014-15 preliminary budget.
Well, I think we need to get the 5.5% increase down. With the facilities that are need updating soon, we're going to be hitting the taxpayer up again real soon. I think that we have, Doug has identified at least $300,000 that, from retirement monies that you had in there, that would be used as a contingency. And if we, I think that needs to be eliminated. I think that needs, that would be two point, by your numbers, it'd be 2.1%.
About that, right.
Right. I don't think we can afford a $300,000 contingency in the budget. I'm sure there's more room in there. I think that if we come across things that we need to do that the budget can't handle, we have a fund balance that can. And from what was sent to me today, or all of us today, I think from Laura or from Doug, it fits that perfectly. We're above our mandated amount for a fund balance, for the board mandated amount. I think everything that we can do to lessen the blow of an increase in the levy to taxpayers the best we need to do it. I, I don't see how we can give them a 5.5% increase now and a couple months down the road, tell them we're going to need X amount of million dollars and to absorb it as well. We had a gentleman at the auditorium a few meetings back, haven't seen him since. However, in having him talk and talking to him after, you know, he's like, I don't know where I'm going to come up with 5.5%. And I'm sure we all say that, we all do in one way or another. But he makes a point that, and he said to me, right now, my wife stays home for a reason, to help with our kids. But with all the rest of the drags on income, on our income, that may not happen. And I understand that that's a choice, as is choice having two income families. But I think we need to keep the burden of the taxes as low as possible, and one way to do it is to take the $300,000 out of the budget. That would take 2% off of the amount. I've been trying, that I think is a must.
Help me out here. Do we need, Nancy, help me out, a resolution to that effect then? How would that, would he be proposing an amendment to the budget? Or, given that I have not facilitated this, how does that go, Doug?
I'm not quite sure.
He could propose an amendment. Right now, what we're voting on is the budget as proposed. So he's suggesting we reduce it by 300,000.
Well, we already, I mean, already had after the finance committee meeting.
Well, you already reduced it and took that out? So this budget as proposed?
Yes, but I suggested that the money still be levied so it would be, become part of our contingency for next year, fund balance.
So then, then what was the 2.1%?
Well, at $100,000 is a 0.7%. So if you take 300,000, that'd be 2.1%.
So the 5.5 minus 2.1?
That, yes.
5.5.
But Doug, didn't you say that you already took that out?
I took it out of the line item in the budget where I had it, but I proposed that we still levy for it.
I kept it in the total budget, took it out as needed for retirement funds and put it as a contingency fund.
And if we didn't use it, we'd be growing our fund balance by that 300,000.
And so, why do we have it in there in the first place? I guess I don't understand that either. For the retirements. I mean, don't people already have to say they're retiring for this year?
We'll finish with your questions and then we'll, let her finish her questions and then we'll.
She did.
Okay. People would be announcing, well, we have people who are already retired and are drawing benefits from the district, and that's the dollar amount that we have in there. We should cover everybody's cost for this year, then probably in the spring, we, if there's anybody else going to retire, that would become a budget item for the following year.
You put the worst-case scenario in there.
Wait a second. Hold on. I need you guys to give me a chance to sort of try to get everybody's questions. Okay, so did that answer to your question, right? Well, sort of, but I mean, okay, so you're covering the people who have already retired, but then you're covering the people who are going to retire next year, then wouldn't that be in next year's budget?
No, the dollar amount that I have in here is what we will be paying out this year to people. So we already know, when I had an additional amount in there, an additional 300,000, and after the finance committee looked at this, we went back in the district office and looked at who we already have a commitment to, to pay money to. And we believe that we could take it down 300,000 and we'll be okay. There's not likely to be, although there could be, retirements that take place during the course of the year. It does happen sometimes.
Okay. Right now, it's in the contingency fund. Okay, Quinn, did you have any questions?
Well, I was just going to say, originally, he put about 600 something thousand, right? Was it?
No, it was 900.
900,000, okay. And then we asked him, we asked, I asked, my question to Doug at that meeting was, in last year's budget, we found, we told you go back and find money, and they found 347,000 or something, in a mistake or something. And I said, are there any mistakes like that? And he said, the one way that, the one area that could, is not a mistake, but could be, we looked at was the retirement fund. And that's where he came up with the, but he said he'd know tomorrow. So that one night meant a lot and he had the figures the next day and came back and said that they could eliminate the 300,000, but he felt they should keep it for a contingency. And that's where my contention is.
Let's get some more questions. I think Jonathan was starting to ask and then we'll come down.
John, Jack can go.
Jonathan, were you going to?
John can go. I can go after that.
Okay, John?
Oh, I was just going to say, I agree with Quinn. I think that we should, we should only tax for what we think we need, not include additional funds for, to intend or the idea of banking if we don't need it. I think that, I don't know, just fundamentally, you know, in theory, people's salaries go up every year in theory, so that if they're, but this is not based on salaries, it's based on home value. Home values don't work that way, obviously. They kind of change with the market and with how they're assessed. But I just think that trying to get a, asking for a bigger piece of somebody's salary pie because their house doesn't make them money unless they sell it at a game, but asking for a bigger piece of their, of their income is hard for me to do, especially in these times and when that money is not earmarked as needed for something other than possibly just improving a fund balance. So I'm not really in favor of taxing at that rate.
Okay. Jonathan?
If we don't, Doug, if we don't have a contingency, some leeway, are we more inclined to have to potentially short-term borrow during the school year? And wouldn't the implications on taxpayers in the district be even more at that point if we had to short-term borrow?
We've had to short-term borrow the last two years. We had a much larger fund balance. That got reduced over the last couple of years, and so we've called it a line of credit, but same thing in terms of the paperwork and process. And I haven't started trying to do any cash flow analysis yet for this year, but we might very well be borrowing again this year. Doesn't cost us that much at today's interest rate. And we've only, when we borrowed the last couple of years, we've only had the money for a few days really to get the taxes in.
And then with Bear's recommendation, if we, you know, in a couple of years, we'd be looking at a pretty drastic negative balance for the district. By doing, staying on this track, you know, we have to keep in mind that we have to kind of compensate for the last two cycles with levies, right? I mean, don't we? We're trying to play a little bit of catch-up and that's what's led to the fund balance being reduced. Whatever reasons behind it, fine. No, Quinn?
Keep talking. I don't think our fund, I actually think our fund balance increased this year.
It did a little bit.
We had money left over from the previous budget. 60,000 or 40-some thousand. So again, it is above the percentage that this board deems needed. It was the 20%?
15.
And it said 23? Yes.
Okay, Jonathan?
I guess my, I guess my point in all this is that if we do this, and then Doug comes back later in the year and says, we ran up to the budget, we're going to go over it a little bit, are we then going to say, why didn't you prepare accordingly for that? Or then are we going to say, we asked you to take this out, you went as lean as possible, now we're going to work with you to be flexible to say you need additional funds? I don't want him to be in a situation where he's proposing this to say, we should have this in case we need it. We're saying take it out. And then he comes back and says, we're going over budget, and then we say, why'd you go over budget? You should have prepared better.
Well, of course, we're going to throw him under the bus.
No, but you know what I'm saying? I just want to make sure, I want to make sure that.
Let me give Irene a chance to talk and then we'll quiet him down. No, it's a good, we got it? Anything else you want to, that's the point? Okay. Irene?
Well, one of the things that I always like to do is I always like to kind of look at a dollar amount to the household, what we're talking about. And then on, like on page 33, if I'm looking at this right, for example, if we, if we do the budget exactly like we were proposing with the tax levy change of 5.5%, if I'm looking at correctly comparing, that increase to what was last year is on a $200,000 property value, it would be $112 increase. So, you know, I always like to point, you know, like that out. I think that's really important when we're talking numbers. So that would be as if we stayed at the 5.5% on a $200,000 property, it'd be $112 increase on that, on a house based at 200,000 for a household. I'm not opposed to taking out the contingency and just trying to make sure we stay close to the budget because it is a higher percentage levy than we've been doing over the last couple of years. But I just wanted also to make sure everybody understood what the dollar impact to households would be.
Okay. Doug?
Keep in mind that when we get to the point where we're proposing a capital improvements project, there's no harm in, A, having money in the general fund balance and in the 41 fund balance. Let's say that we decide it's going to be a $5 million project and we've got a couple, let's say a million and a half, $2 million in our fund balances, that reduces the amount of money that we have to go out and borrow to build the school. So it's sort of like the old pay me now or pay me later, but you have options that if we build up a fund balance, it could be used, and your folks are going to have to decide which is the most sellable, I guess, in that regard.
Stephanie, did you have some comments and then we'll come back to that.
So here's my thoughts on this, a couple of them. First of all, that contingency, if we leave it in there at the 300,000, is less than we have had in prior years. We have had, we did almost 450,000 last year. And the year before, I don't remember what the year before was. And yes, we, we went through most of that 450,000, but what we were able to do with that increase or that contingency really impacted the education of the kids. We were able to put in those coaches. We could do the K-12 coordinators. We were able to absorb some of the lease costs of putting in an iPad initiative all at once at the high school. These are things that directly benefited the education of the kids. That's not something that I can complain about. It just, I can't. 300,000 is less than what we've done in other years. I too would not like to leave the district short. Now, short-term borrowing doesn't necessarily make us look bad, this is true, but it's still not something that I'd like to get in the habit of doing because we are not leaving us a little bit of wiggle room in that budget. Now, I'm not proposing that we do 5, 6, 700,000 in contingency, that's not what I'm suggesting. So I'm glad that it's less than what we did last year. By not taxing to the maximum authority, that does affect us down the road. That does start to cut into our aid because we're essentially telling the state, we don't need your money. Well, guess what? We're probably going to need every penny we can get from the state and any other source we can find. So I wouldn't necessarily want to cut us back so far now that affects us in our future what we can and can't do for the kids. Those capital improvement projects, I would much rather take what is a smaller gradual increase, although 5.5% is, is a chunk, especially for some of the seniors that we have on fixed incomes in this area. It is a chunk, but I would rather do smaller increases consistently to help build some of those funds, put them in restricted funds, manage the cash that we do have, and manage the cash differently than what we have in the past. and manage the cash differently than what we have in the past. So, I'm not excited about taking an increase on my income taxes either. But when I see what we've been able to do, and what we need to do in the future, that's something I can advocate for with the public.
John?
My concern is that, I mean, how high was the fund balance, like, four years ago? Thirteen or sixteen million, or something like that, or? I, I can't.
I think it was eleven or twelve in that area.
And now it's?
Uh, just under six.
Okay. And a bunch of that was the sports complex and that kind of thing. So, and last year, we did not tax to the max, or the, the board that sat last year did not tax to the max. And yet, they had.
The past two years.
Okay. But they had, last year, they had four-hundred-and-fifty thousand for contingent? Is that what you're saying? And then, they didn't bank nearly all that, because, like, things came up that they chose to spend it on. So I guess, my, my point from that is that we seem to be in a trend of we'll get more than we know we need, but then we tend to, not necessarily looking for ways to spend it, but then we tend to spend a bunch of that, at least this is historically, I guess, what's been happening. How much did you increase the fund balance of then? Of that four-fifty, how much did we actually say, keep, roll over?
Uh, the fund balance went from.
I'm not sure what the page to look at.
Five, five point eight million to, um, no, five point seven million to five point eight million.
So.
Didn't go up.
Roughly, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand was spent of the four-fifty we didn't think we would need for the budget. And though it was for the kids, I guess, and that's very important, that's an excellent point. But though it was for the kids, I guess my point is, it seems that no matter how much we tax, we can find a way to spend most of it where, at the beginning of the year, we don't see us needing all of that. Does that make sense? So, you know, maybe, maybe we need to figure out how to not spend money.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Would, do we then amend the budget? Someone could propose amending it.
But does that point make sense?
To reduce it by three hundred thousand. Did you mean, to reduce it by three hundred? That, one of you could make a motion to amend the budget, and then you would need a second, and then we would vote on the amendment.
Or we would discuss it.
And then, right. We would discuss it, and then we would amend it, have further discussion on it.
And you also can write up, even at the annual meeting, make changes to it. And there will be, actually, even after it's passed, changes as things come in, like the student count, property value, you know, all those, the factors that go into the. And if those come out, awesome.
And the historic, I mean, I, I know that the two years I've been on the board, we've received more than we had planned for. Has it historically been that, or is it just a blimp on the radar, or?
In Nancy and the.
It's definitely, and you might know, I don't know.
I don't, I don't know that we've ever ended up truly short, that we've had increase after the annual meeting. We've always been so conservative when we plan to begin with. Nancy, do you remember any?
I, I think the more the question is, is we get more from the state than what we had originally projected. And I, I think we probably have, but, you know, you never know. It could go the other way, too, so.
I know.
It's really unpredictable.
And then, last year, we also gave back ninety-nine thousand. Remember, was it ninety-nine thousand? That came to us through a special exemption, or whatever it was. I'm just saying, you know, and Nancy's point is very valid, that the whims of the state could go just the other way. Does.
Would someone like to make comments?
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
If we take this three hundred thousand out, what does that leave us for a contingency?
Well, technically, when we do our budgeting, we don't put in slush fund money, or that sort of thing, anyplace. I mean, for example, the salary and benefit budget. I have a name and a contracted salary and benefits attached to every person employed by the district, and I don't have any extra people in there anyplace for a contingency.
So how did we have a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar contingency last year?
Well, it's one thing to, we did not anticipate it at the start of the year.
Pardon?
We didn't anticipate it at the start of the year. It's not something that we had built in.
Where'd it come from?
And where did it, yeah, exactly. Where did it come from then?
We ended up getting more revenue as part of it, and we also had some of the staff turnover. People left in the middle of the year, and they were replaced by lower-cost people.
So somehow, we built up four-hundred-and-fifty thousand without having it built into the budget? Is what you just said.
Well, I've been actually sitting here, I need to take a look at this. I'm, I'm not sure where the four-hundred-and-fifty thousand idea came from. We did not increase the fund balance by that much at the end of the year.
No, 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 she didn't say that. She said that we had.
Four-hundred-and-fifty thousand. I can't remember when we noticed that, if it was mid-year.
But our original budget did not have.
Did not contain that.
A contingency fund. And this year, you added a contingency fund. My question is, is that a fund then that can be used? You know, because we're in a competitive market in negotiating staff salaries. Is that a, is that one of the reasons? I'm wondering where we would get money, because I keep hearing stories of how other districts, people, teachers, administrators are moving around, because it's such a competitive market. And if we get rid of the three hundred thousand, what happens in that scenario? Where do we get the money? Because like you said, every penny is budgeted for in salaries.
All other things being equal, at the end of the year, our fund balance would absorb.
Would absorb that, okay.
Overage.
Quinn, can I just reference something like that?
My last question, yes.
On page thirty-five, if you look at the tax levies by district versus state average, compared to where we are. Excuse me?
Yeah, we're like third.
We're like third and one.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Jonathan. Jonathan, finish.
We're below the state average in twenty-eleven to twenty-twelve, twenty-twelve to twenty-thirteen, twenty-thirteen to twenty-fourteen. And we're well below Franklin, Greendale, Greenfield, and Muskego. Even at this year's rate, what we're proposing at ten point six-nine, we'd still be below twenty-twelve and thirteen, twenty-thirteen, fourteen, for those same districts.
Just to put it in perspective of the big picture.
Okay. Any other discussion then on the budget?
What I was saying is that we're third lowest. That's what I was saying, third, we're third lowest consistently in those years, just at a glance than I did earlier.
Okay. Any other discussion on the budget?
Well, I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, remember, if, whatever we vote on tonight isn't necessarily the final decision. You know, the community votes on it, and then we still have a chance before the end of the year to change it. So, I mean, there's two other, two other data points in here that we're gonna have, so. And then, by that time, we'll have more information on what money that we're getting from the state, so. This is not the final, is what I'm trying to say.
So.
Okay, yes.
So, Stephanie said something about how we look from the state's perspective, or how it could affect, is that accurate? That if, if this, does the state look at it and see that we're not taxing near the max and figure we don't need the money, or are they, do they not look at it that way, or do they not?
They don't actually look at every individual district. There's a state aid formula that's applied to districts based on their enrollment and their past spending patterns. And so, you know, to ask if somebody is looking at us, no, not really. But we are subject to that same formula as everybody else is.
But last year, they gave a fifty-dollar per-student rebate for the districts that did tax to the max, correct?
Uh, yes, in the twelve-thirteen year.
Right, twelve-thirteen, okay.
We didn't get it, because we didn't tax to the max.
But, so. But if you look at, on page thirty-five, at least that's what number mine's on, it has the general aid that we've been getting from the state. That's just from the state, Doug?
Yes.
And it has, it actually increased, projected this year. It has been pretty stable. One year, we were down two-hundred-and-fifty thousand from the previous year, but it's been pretty stable as far as what we've gotten since oh-eight.
So, our options are, from what I'm hearing, some of you may want to amend this, or we can vote on this as-is, and move it forward as-is.
I'd like to make a motion, eliminate three hundred thousand from the preliminary budget.
That would be an amendment to the budget, correct?
Correct.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
And moved and seconded. Any further discussion on amending the budget by lowering it by three hundred thousand? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we're gonna vote on just the amendment, and then we'll vote on the main budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So, motion fails. So we're back to the original vote on the budget. And before we do that, I guess I hadn't said too much about it. I, I still think we have to look at our district goals, and what are we trying to achieve? And with the educator effectiveness, and now with our new, hopefully, focus from the board on technical programs, and what can we do to ensure that every student is prepared for college and career? I mean, that's, that's what I always look at. Do we, do we need this money to advance the education of our students? And I'm comfortable with this budget, that we can do that. So, I will look forward to accountability on these dollars, and making sure that we're a little bit better this year on achieving the goals that we've set. So, any other comments on the budget?
I have a question. How did the fund balance get up to twelve million dollars before we started spending it down?
Well, it was already there when I started with the district, but my understanding is that the district was levying to the max for years, and gradually, it accumulated. Maybe somebody who's been around longer than I have would know the answer to that. But that's really, you, you can cut your expenses on the one side, and you can tax to the max over here, and the combination gets you a big fund balance.
I think it's a compliment to the past boards that we have moved that. But we have some big projects coming up. So when I look at that, again, I can justify a three-hundred-thousand-dollar contingency fund that we can then put towards these cap projects in the future. I think if we were all set, I might be a little more flexible in that number, but we're, we're gonna, we're gonna need that. I'm sorry, I'm rambling. Any other comments on the budget? If not, I would entertain a motion then to approve the budget as-is.
Set the motion.
Yeah, I would entertain a motion to approve the preliminary.
Budget.
Twenty-fourteen, fifteen, oh, you're so moved. Sorry.
I'll second.
Nancy seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Which way did you go opposed? Opposed, okay.
Motion carries four to three. All right, next up, we have approval of July twenty-eighth, August eleventh, and August thirteenth, twenty-fourteen, school board meeting minutes.
I pulled that, I just, they're kind of little nitpicky things, but on the July twenty-eighth minutes regarding item E, which was, had to do with the capital improvements, it reads something along the lines that I mentioned while the loading dock area at the high school needs work, asked if, asked something about at Hills Corners Elementary, I gotta get the exact word. I, I wanted to reflect that I was, was getting at, in particular, the blacktop and the playground needs, because those would be, you know, equated directly with the blacktop needs, or, you know, loading dock needs at the high school. Which, I will note, is all a moot point, because I'm really happy to see that the blacktop needs at Hills Corners Elementary have been attended to before the start of the school year. But I just wanted the meanings, not to say that, is there something in HCE that needs to be done, but rather that I was referring directly to the blacktop and playground needs.
Which one?
Um, that was on July twenty-eighth, item E.
Item E, okay.
Capital improvements.
Okay. So, do we need to amend those minutes?
I have one more, one other, well, are we gonna do them one set at a ti?
So what did you want it to say?
I just mentioned the loading dock needs work, and asked if there's anything we need to be looking at for HCE.
So, anything, instead of having it read, anything we should be looking at, at HCE, it should read in, I asked in particular about the blacktop and playground needs at HCE.
Looking at, so you would add the words blacktop and.
Playground.
Playground at it for HCE, okay. All right, we've got that. Next? And then I think we can vote on all the minutes together?
They're together. It's written as together, so then I should probably address my, okay, on the August, oh geez, there's three sets. No, okay, the August eleventh board meetings. We were talking about the two thousand fourteen, fifteen budget, something about, I gotta actually get right to it, sorry. Had it, and then we started talking about other things here. There's some part where we're talking about expansions and technology and educational coaches have made it difficult to remain cost-neutral. And that is correct, you know, but I feel, I feel like when I had brought that up last, at that meeting, there was also a little bit of a monitoring or accountability piece. So, I wanted, you know, I know I had mentioned something about monitoring, you know, the value of the increased costs that were, you know, for supporting educator effectiveness and technology programs. So, I wanted to add something about that, that why it won't be cost-neutral. We understand that, that there was also, we need to moni, you know, we need to monitor the value for spending those, those additional dollars in those areas. So going forward, you know, we will say, is this giving us the best bang for our bucks as far as outcome for our students?
Oh, you're gonna add. You wanna read that back to us?
Okay, so, on the sentence you wanna read, is difficult to remain cost-neutral, and we understand that we need to monitor the value of spending additional dollars.
On, on these, those two.
And on those items.
Those items, okay.
Getting the best bang for our dollars.
I didn't have to say that, but just, that we need to monitor the increased costs to support the educator affection and technology programs, because that's where our biggest increases are.
Is that it?
That was it.
That was it, okay. So, there's a, let's see, do we wanna entertain a motion to approve the minutes with those two adjustments, friendly amendments? Am I okay with the board to approve the minutes with those two amendments? Two.
Yes.
Corrections.
Corrections, two corrections, okay? Make a motion then. So moved. Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Okay, next up on our agenda, old business, old business slash new business, educator effectiveness. I had asked for an update on this, because at our forward-thinking meeting, we had a very, very good discussion about where we're going with this. And we recently had some training, so I'll turn it over to Tony to bring us up to date on where this is going in our district. Thank you.
Yes, thanks for having me. Love talking about this stuff. Especially now that the TeachScape software is actually. Do you want to get the lights, or?
Um, do you wanna explain what the TeachScape, right, TeachScape is?
I will certainly will. Yeah, not that. Is that better? Yeah.
Sure, keep us in the dark.
So, what I, as I mentioned in the memo to the board, first paragraph talked a little bit about what we're doing logistically to keep, stay prepared and stay on top of it. But more importantly is the perspective that we're taking, and the approach that we're taking with teachers and staff. Kind of the underlying approach to this whole piece. As with anything that comes forward, as far as an initiative or a mandate, for lack of a better word, you can either take the hierarchical power road, or you can take a road of, let's get our heads wrapped around this together and figure out where we're going. So, the mantra that we'll be rolling out to the, the district. So the mantra that we'll be rolling out to the, the district tomorrow as well as Thursday is that we're learning and growing together. But this whole, there's a lot of moving parts. As a matter of fact, things are still moving today for this whole rollout, which is to occur in six days. But, so we're all gonna be kind of going through this together. I have a copy of the August Institute's schedule.
Can I like interrupt once in a while? Hope you don't mind, but the other cool part about growing together is how, I wanted us also to be really clear about one thing because we may get some complaints about this year, this, but if not, we should be explaining this to the public because it's a growth model. So growing together, really, this whole educator effectiveness is about, is about a new way to grow our teachers and the state of Wisconsin is using it as a growth model, not an accountability piece. I just wanted to emphasize that at this point because it fits with that slide about growing together. We need to grow our teachers, we as a board need to grow, our administrators need to grow. It's all about change this year. So go ahead, now tell us about the change.
Well, so this is the, the August Institute's schedule, which I forwarded to you, but I just felt it was important to put it up there. You can see that today we spent time in the auditorium working with our, the Greenfield Police and Fire Departments, Hills Corners Police and Fire Departments in Greendale for, in preparation for our crisis preparedness. But tomorrow, you can see that our entire day is focused on educator effectiveness implementation. So we're not just rolling it out to our teachers and saying, figure this out, but in fact, all of the sessions tomorrow that are, are being led by teachers for teachers. We're not paying any gurus to come in here. We have our own teachers who are trained through the educator effectiveness grant that we had earned within conjunction with Greenfield and Greendale, all in one room. So we're using our own people, the effectiveness coaches, which the board was kind enough to approve last year, as well as key teacher leaders in the buildings. We'll be working with, with groups of teachers. So the morning is focused on specifically the logistical piece of what is an SLO? And how do I create those? And then we're working with teacher teams about those and looking at, they have an SLO toolkit on the DPI's website. So they're gonna be looking at specific goals and what they look like and creating their own. And then we're gonna break for lunch and in the afternoon, we're gonna log into TeachScape, which is the software that the, the state has purchased and partnered with the company in order to house all this stuff. And it's a very complex system that consists of three different components. One is a training module. One is where they actually enter in some of the pieces. And then the last one, which only administrators have access to, is the training module for actual classroom observations and the exact type of piece that, that part. So.
When you say SLOs, I know there's people watching that may not know what that is.
Yes, and that all, that's coming.
SLOs.
That's my next slide. But an SLO is, is a student learner, learning outcome for teachers. So teachers need to set a goal based upon student learning and then it's a school learning outcome for principals who are setting goals based upon their school's data. So the idea is that we've, we have introduced this concept as early as last year, but we're just keep coming, we keep coming back to it as data. Information keeps getting updated and now the rubber's even the road and we're actually gonna start creating these, these goals. So that's really our focus. And then Wednesday, we're gonna go back to the safety training in the afternoon in our buildings. And then Thursday, we're back at curriculum development, which actually does involve the same piece there because we're saying, if this is our goal, then how do we start designing assessments that are aligned to that, that goal piece? So that's the kind of the logistical overview, I guess, of educator effectiveness. It's not too, not too bold to you because it's not really, there's, we're, we're being prepared, we're on it, we've got our teachers involved and we're excited to see how it all, how it all is gonna play. But we talked with the new teachers last week and this is just a, kind of all those stuff that gets thrown out there, right? When we talk about change and all the things that are coming our way and try to talk about the differences and commonalities and all those things. An SLO is a student learning outcome, a PPG is a professional or personal practice goal. So what am I going to do in order to meet this goal? The Danielson Framework for Teaching, twenty thirteen, is the stuff that we use to frame the way that we talk about quality teaching. So it's rubrics, there's four different domains and all that good stuff that's there. Supervision and evaluation, we delineate these things. Supervision means I'm checking in, evaluating means I'm, I'm assigning merit. So supervision says that I'm just seeing what's going on and ensuring that it's happening. Evaluation is on determining to what degree it's happening and to what degree it affects it. So the reason those terms are important are that people play different roles. The elements who can evaluate are principals. But there are many folks who can contribute to supervision of students and curriculum and have pieces.
Forgive me if I'm getting ahead, but how is that done? Evaluation and supervision. When you say that, what does that mean? Are those the building walkthroughs?
Evaluations are done by building principals.
Right. And supervision is done how?
Supervision in a general sense means that we're ensuring that we have curriculum in place and that instruction is occurring. So teachers working with other teachers is, to an extent, supervision because there's an accountability that, that's there. If the two of us agree to teach a lesson and we go in and teach that lesson and then talk about it afterwards, we're technically supervising what's going on as far as curriculum development. Our coaches can supervise, our K twelve graders supervise the development of curriculum and the work of their teachers. So supervision tends to have a bad rap as, as a negative word, but in, in reality, it's not. It's about supervising, meaning I'm standing away from it and standing back and looking down upon it and ensuring that it's happening.
So then our building walkthroughs part of the evaluation?
Building, uh-
Because I understand that's part of this.
Classroom walkthroughs are a part of the evaluation process.
And those, are those changing this year as a result of this?
No, not unless they're actually being, the idea is classrooms will still be visited by other teachers or instructional coaches or whoever. But if it's an evaluation, then obviously there's a process in place and the teachers are aware that the walkthroughs have a different purpose.
Right, I thought there was a component of that in the educator effectiveness.
There is.
And they ratcheted it up and then they cut that back a little. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause that, you're starting to get into more, needing more time.
Right.
For those to work, more staff time, more administrator time.
Right.
Okay.
And then so the, we talked about how it relates to other things, like what is the function of an instructional effectiveness coach? Well, a coach is not there to necessarily punish, is not there to supervise, is not there to evaluate, is there to coach. Means they're gonna partner with you, I'm gonna bounce into you about you. And what we talked about is myself, I taught a lot in this, this recently, of going back and watching a video recorded performance of our band and seeing just how not so great the show was, even though at the time it sure felt really great. And the idea is that oftentimes as teachers, not that we don't have great lessons, but we think that there's certain things are happening while we're involved in it. And if we have another set of eyes just passing through to cause a dialogue, not necessarily cause any type of evaluation, the dialogue causes me to then begin framing and thinking about why I can and can't do it with our team. And that's the idea. So instructional effectiveness coaches are there to say, hey, I saw you do this and that was really great. And I'd like to share with your colleagues, can you talk to them about what you did? Hey, I saw this, have you ever considered doing this? Have you ever seen this, this resource? Have you ever seen this type of lesson being taught? They're there to serve as research for teachers. So the idea is these folks support teachers as they create these goals and do these things in order to improve their quality of instruction. That's the whole idea. And the evaluation is just kind of, it should, in a good evaluation model, everyone should be able to rate themselves without ever even looking at it. Because if you spend so much time upfront, prior to that, and had so many conversations, then the evaluation isn't a surprise. It's not a gotcha model. It's, yep, and that was, the word wrong with that, makes sense.
It's a growth model.
Right, that's the perspective we're at. So, and then EEP is the educator effectiveness plan, which is the SLO and the PPG. And if it's your evaluation year, your Danielson Framework for Teaching, so it's all of that stuff. My plan for, for moving forward. The piece that we talked about here, the PDP is for teacher certification and teacher licensure. PDPs and teacher licensure are not affected in any way whatsoever by educator effectiveness. There's no tie between educator effectiveness and licensure. So if a teacher is, is not, not effective in, as far as the rubrics are concerned, they can't have their license revoked. It's not, you know, they're not simultaneous. Nor can their SLOs necessarily serve as their PDP. That's a different piece. And we're very clear with that, especially with newer teachers, so that they understand that there's still an obligation to keep your license up. So all that information is at this link at the bottom and it takes you to the, my web, my part of the website. I put together that sheet that I sent you last year that has some vocabulary and definitions and all that stuff.
You typed all that little stuff?
I just copied it. But you can just click on it on a PDF, you just can't click on the-
Well, yeah, I was just saying, God bless you, you did that.
So the one thing that, that I would like to kind of throw out to you tonight, and this is the same thing that we throw out to our teachers and our, our teacher leadership team for this board, is to really think outside of the box. This is not a state initiative that's, that has happened before. The Danielson Framework for Teaching is not new. I was digging through my files and I'm not a saver unless it's certain things. And I found my very first teacher evaluation and way back then, which was quite a while ago, the, I pulled my evaluation out and it was the Danielson Framework for Teaching. And it said, pick which domain you're gonna focus on and create a goal and then monitor yourself toward that goal. And I thought, wow, that's pretty wild. You know, fifteen years later, here we are back to, to the exact same thing. Of course, now it's the framework for two thousand thirteen because Charlotte Danielson makes way more money if her book has a few vocabulary words changed in it, so that makes sense. But in, the gist of it is exactly the same. So by thinking outside the box, we're saying, rather than thinking of it as an initiative by the state or thinking about it as something new, it's not new, it's not really changed. We've done this before. We've been doing this. It's the whole plan, do, study, act model. It's saying, we have stupid results, we wanna improve them, how exactly do we go about doing it? So we posed the question, how do students best learn? I'm getting married, I have answers, right? The idea is when they believe they can. In order to do that, we have to have clearly delineated goals. We have to have clear expectations. We have to know where we're targeting our instruction. So all of our efforts need to focus on letting our students know that in fact, they can learn and they will learn and we're gonna support them in that whole piece. The same goes for our teachers. If we're gonna roll something out and we're looking to get our heads wrapped around a very complex model, they need to believe that they can do this too. And that's why we have a teacher leadership team in place and that's why we're taking time from the institute to ensure that teachers are exposed to these things that will go along. I'd like to bring some statistics into the whole, the whole piece and I think it's important for the board to understand kind of our philosophy as we're developing curriculum and also approaching this educator effectiveness thing. John Hattie did a meta-analysis, which is an analysis of other analyses. It's one and a half million students worldwide. He's from, from New Zealand. And what he did was he took statistically, he created a Z factor, which is a neutral stat that you can cross. You can actually compare apples to, apples to oranges. It's basically like this. You can compare apples to oranges with this Z factor. So he went and he, what he did was he found standard deviations and he could say, there's an impact here, there, or whatever else. And he looked at anything in every study that ever said, there's an effect on student achievement, and he put it on a scale and said, yes, that does a lot. That does pretty much nothing because that's the way kids should go and that is actually detrimental. And he put everything from birth order to class size to non-verbal communication, to edit, you name it, he's got it there. Millions of students, years and years of work, and it boiled down to two things. The first thing he said, when teachers see their classrooms through the eyes of their students, students learn best. And the second thing he said, once students are their own best teachers, students learn best. So you can go through this whole book and, and even he talks about it. He says, as a teacher, if you say, oh, I, I'm, with my smaller class size, my kids learn better. Yep, the stats say that they will. Another teacher's gonna come in and say, yeah, because I use multiple intelligence, the stats say that my kids, you know, my kids got better. He says, yep, the stats sure say they will. But how much better is a different story. He said, if you can get teachers to see their classrooms through the eyes of students and students realizing that they're their own best teachers, then you, you've hit the, the magic formula. And the implications here are pretty substantial, right? Especially for elementary kids, it's a world of behinds. They're all shorter, right? Think about their world. People like myself, wherever it would challenge, summer classes is a different experience than for my cousin who's six foot three. Doesn't quite catch as much. Seeing the world through their eyes is important. It's a, it's a, it's an important piece to looking at curriculum and discussing how exactly you're instructing. Students being their own best teachers has vast implications. Look at our mission statement. Personal vision. If I'm my own best teacher, you're not the determiner of my fate or my learning, I am. You're here to assist me in my learning. So really his research is in the exact, is in, is in exact alignment with what we're doing. Educator effectiveness teaches us to see classrooms through the eyes of our students. And all of the curriculum work that we've been doing is really enabling students to be their own best teachers. Because if we have a clear learning target and then give them options, like a menu, they pick what best suits them. That's the idea. And it goes back to what Lynn was talking about earlier. Mindset is everything. What you believe is what they achieve. Have you ever been a coach of young kids? Amen, right? The minute they don't believe that it's gonna happen, you may as well just write it off. Just give them their treats, hand them their treats and send them home because they need to believe that they have a chance. And when they believe they, they have a chance, they'll do anything they can possibly do to make it happen. So we talked about, oh, sorry, two different mindsets. Again, I won't spend too much time on the research, but Carol Dweck was a psychologist, is a psychologist. Did some research on mindset. And in short, her study had two groups of students in two different rooms. And one group of students, they gave, both groups of students, they gave a very, they were third graders. They gave them a first grade math problem and said, figure it out. So of course they sounded right away. These are third graders, so they still love school, right? So they come back into the room and they told one, this group of students, they said, you're really smart. And they said, you're really smart, good job. Good job, you're really smart. And one of those group of students, they said, you worked really hard, good job. And then they walked back into the rooms and they said, who wants to do another math problem? And because they're third graders, they all said, I do, I wanna do another math problem. And she said, great. I'm gonna give you another math problem. You want a harder one or an easier one? And the ones that they said were really smart, they said, give us another one, just like the one we just did. So they did. And the other class, they said, give us one that's a little bit more difficult. And they did. So both kids did. Smart kids finished really quickly and the hard workers finished a little bit more slowly, but they finished because there were problems that they could all do. And they walked back in and they said, you're really smart. And they walked in and said, you worked really hard, great job. So then, they had tricks up their sleeves and they brought in a fifth grade math problem. And none of them were witness students who were gifted. So they couldn't do it. They knew that they couldn't handle this, this fifth, this fifth grade math problem. And they gave it to each team. And what they found was in the smart classroom, what she saw, was in the smart classroom, within the first five minutes, the entire class had given up. Every kid in the room had just pushed the paper away. They can't sit back, they sat back in their seats. They kind of looked at the ceiling. People started pulling each other's hair and, you know, doing whatever else. And in the classroom where they came in and told them that they worked really hard, the kids were still struggling after ten minutes. One girl was crying. Couple of kids actually teamed up and started trying to get it done together. Other people were pacing and looking frustrated and everything else. And what she saw, or what she, you know, attributed this to, was that in the growth mindset, these folks, you worked really hard means you've always got a chance to make it happen. And in this, in this circumstance, you have a fixed mindset. You're smart. It's a condition. I can't do anything for you. You just are what you are. And so after I read this whole article, I realized how terrible of a parent I am. I went home and told my daughters, they're not smart, that they're all just hard workers and that they need to erase all that from their minds. But it got, you know, it got me thinking. And in her research, she, she continued and dedicated the rest of her life to that whole piece and you can go find that. She, they've repeated these studies among not only students, but adults and people that work in, in social work and all that other great stuff. And how people's lives are different based upon the mindset that they have. So we're talking to our teachers the same way, that in fact, we wanna, we wanna embrace this growth mindset. But there are vast differences when you think about that. Because if you have a fixed mindset, mistakes are bad. Answers are right or wrong. When you screw up, I'm gonna make sure that you know it and I'm gonna make sure everybody around knows it. So you never do it again. That's a fixed mindset. So the way that I react if I'm a fixed mindset kid, I don't get it 'cause it's your fault. If you're still gonna make me do it, I'm just gonna give up. Because what I've learned is that when I try, I can't do it. So then I'm gonna do whatever I can to avoid having to engage because it's just a reaffirmation of the fact that I can't do it. So what happens? I'm gonna do everything I can and get kicked out of class. I'm not gonna do the homework. I'm gonna act up. I'm gonna do whatever I can because I have a fixed mindset. There's nothing I can do. I can't do this. Perfect example. How many of you have said this one? I can't do math. Right? I can't do math. My dad couldn't do math. My grandpa couldn't do math. As far as I know, they haven't found a math gene that says, sorry, son, just looked at your genes. Better go be an English teacher 'cause you don't have the math gene. It doesn't work that way. That's a fixed mindset. The idea is that in fact, you're born with enough capacity to excel in whatever it may be. Now, that doesn't mean that everybody's gonna be a mathematician someday or a rocket scientist. But it means that if you lay something out in front of them and show them a clear path to get to the thing and believe in what they're doing and support them in what they're doing, they're gonna be able to do it to some degree. But you know what that means? You gotta be tolerant of me making mistakes. And some people, like my wife, who is perfect, make very few mistakes. And some people like me make lots of mistakes. And somehow you have to be able to embrace both of us, both of our styles. That some of us make lots of mistakes and learn from it and some of us don't need to make as many mistakes. So how do we work with that whole piece and how do we bring all that together? It's a very different classroom, right? A different environment, a different work environment altogether? If you go with a growth mindset. Think about it. I see, if I'm a growth mindset, meaning every time I make a mistake, I'm gonna get better. Fantastic. Fantastic. Fantastic, right? Every time I make a mistake, I'm going to get better. Think about how wonderful your house would be if everyone embraced the fact that every time you make a mistake, it's getting better. I'm just getting better at it. I have to make my mistakes, right? That's the way it works. I can invest my efforts strategically in order to get better, because I'm not, I'm not conditioned, I'm not fixed, I'm not just smart or dumb. I can get there as long as I work at it. I embrace feedback because I know that in fact, I can do this. You give me something positive.
How are you creating this growth mindset in the district?
This is how we're creating it.
How are you doing that?
We're creating it by saying that expertise, expertise, competence, right? Competence begins the path of expertise, and after competence, then we decide how exactly we're going to apply it to a specific situation. Malcolm Gladwell, has anybody read Outliers? It's his newest, newest book. Talks about expertise and how you develop it. It takes 10,000 hours in order to master a skill. Twenty hours a week intentionally, deliberately practicing for 10 years, and you can get there. So the idea is that we want to develop an expertise in, in instruction. Shouldn't all teachers have expertise when they leave college?
Shouldn't every semi-professional ice skater be having the skills that it takes to be an Olympic ice skater?
Shouldn't every professional ice skater have the skills to be an Olympic ice skater? Shouldn't every Olympic ice skater have the skills to never fall down? No. The idea is that if you embrace a growth mindset, look at statistically, the greatest ice skaters in the world fell down more so than the worst ones. Think Michael Jordan. Michael Jordan missed more shots than he ever made, ever. Right? I wouldn't say this is bad down there. Sorry LeBron James fans, but Michael Jordan's still the greatest basketball player in the league. So the idea is that in order to do this, we have to take risks. And if we believe that, then we realize that expertise is difficult, yet it's rewarding. Change is hard, right? It's difficult. Growth is a process. Expert teachers, if you have expertise, it's not born into you, you're not just an expert. It takes experience. A learning environment produces better results when it becomes evaluated. I need to know that the learning environment that I'm creating is effective. And that doesn't mean just because of my principal box, and it's, it's a, it's a scheduled walkthrough, or because I have the board member's kid in my class. It's because I'm aware of what best practices are, and I'm reflective about my practice, that I have coaches and colleagues that I can go to and talk about my practices and make adjustments based upon it.
So are student learning outcomes going to look different this year than, than they have in the past? Have teachers always developed those, or are they new this year?
In this format, in this format, they would be new. Our teachers have always set goals and it's different.
They've always set goals, but are they specific to student learning?
They were always specific to student learning, yep.
So then, how is this process going to be different?
This process isn't different.
They're going to have to register online, and then they're going to be evaluated based on those, I'm not evaluated, growth. They'll be able to look at those results, and that'll be online, correct?
For the teachers, yes.
For the teachers, not for us. So that they can evaluate their own practice, and then change their practice based on a growth model for their kids. So it's a growth model for students and teachers. I see that as different this year because there's the online component.
You had a question, and I didn't catch the answer to.
Yeah.
You had a question, they've always set goals, and then you said, how is it different this year versus
Right.
previous years?
I would say that this year, the difference is that we've put a standardized framework around it and a common vocabulary.
Okay.
So the processes will remain the same, we've just inserted specific language around it.
So student learning outcome would be based on end of chapter test, or what? What would it be, what would it be? Just help me understand one.
Um.
Have they completed a project? Is it the percentage of students that complete the projects?
No, no, it would be based on a specific skill set.
Specific standards or skill set, okay.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
We look at, we look at more specific learning components, like a learning target.
And so this is, I'm hearing this is hard for our teachers, for some.
It is, and that's why we're taking this, this growth model, and for example, we talk about reflection, deliberate practice, and the development of feedback as catalyst for growth. So if we're going to hold people accountable for how specifically their SLOs look and feel, then we're compromising the integrity of the growth mindset. What we're saying is, there's no SLO police who are going to show up, or educator effectiveness police, who are going to show up and handcuff you and take you away if in fact, you don't get the process perfectly right the first time. We're going to try our best at looking at student data, developing a goal that we can put wrapper heads around, doing what we can to meet that goal, and then reflecting upon it, and then deliberately practicing once we've seen it to figure out what exactly do we need to do better, or differently in order to move forward, and then seek feedback. And that's really what they want to tell about.
So is the student data, like, do you have the student data in mind, like, I mean, in addition to like ACT scores or something, or?
No, that's too big. The SLOs are not about that. They're about very specific learning components. And the idea is that going back to, I doubt she did that the first time. I doubt she even does that, all that regularly in practice. There's all kinds of little steps that it takes to get there first. And if you don't get all those little steps right, you'll never get to the point of levitating above an exceptionally hard surface that's really cold.
Levitating?
She's completely up in the air. So.
This is a video.
So the, you know, the idea is that, that what we need to do is, we need to pay attention to those smaller steps along the way. For example, we don't just look at the reading ACT score, we look at third grader reading levels, and before we look at third grader reading levels, we look at the PALS assessment way back in kindergarten, and we look at Phineas and Cores, and you know.
Well, we're going to have a data session where we can all get a little bit more on the same page on all of those assessments.
So that was really, in the beginning, when we, when we looked at Common Core, right? And you said, what, you know, what are the skills that our students need at different stages along the way?
Mm-hmm.
And you broke those down into like little chunks, or what would be learning objectives, right? Learning targets. So that in essence, is kind of what the teachers are going to say, if I'm doing it this way, and, you know, a percentage of my students are able to achieve that learning target, so that I can move on to the next one.
Correct.
Or maybe a teacher in another classroom did this, and more of her students were able to achieve that, you know, maybe then looking at that practice to say, is that something maybe might be effective in my classroom? Is that kind of?
Yes. So the educator effectiveness model doesn't really get into practice too much, it's more about just that end goal. So that's really why we have coaches, and that's why we want to raise this model and look at the practices. So let's say, I'm just making this up hypothetically, that our students are underachieving in reading. And that's a big statement to make. They're underachieving because only forty percent of our kids are advanced or proficient in reading. Does that really help guide you as a classroom teacher? No, it's too big of a statistic. So we start drilling down by grade level, and we look at that. Now we're in a grade level, right? So let's make it up, let's say third grade, we're going to look at third grade reading, and we see that there, there's still a forty percent gap. So we want to know specifically, how do we help kids read better? What's the issue? So we drill into that data, and we look, and we see that what it is, at that particular level, our students scored lowest in fluency. Then we had eighty percent of our students, and again, this is all made up, eighty percent of our students who did not support proficient or advanced in fluency. That's our targeted audience. We're looking at third grade reading comprehension in particular. So I'm, my SLO will be written around specifically, reading comprehension at the third grade level as measured by insert here. So whether it's a MAP assessment throughout the year, or maybe it's a common assessment that teachers develop, whatever that diagnostic tool is going to be, that's what our goal is focused. So ultimately, you're impacting the big chunk, reading as a score in and of itself, but we went down, we drilled down to that, that one particular, that one particular piece. Does that make sense? So it's kind of finding that specific cause of the, the needs.
It makes sense, but I can see where it's going to take a little time
Yep.
to get the mechanics down and the understanding and the practice.
Correct. And that's why we're this little one right there. Actually, we're probably not that, we're like a seedling if this little red thing was right there. That's us, we're the little seed, and we're hoping to be this by the end of the year, and then maybe, you know, as the years go on, metaphorically speaking. But quite honestly, we're, we're in good shape because honestly, as a district, we've been practicing this. We just didn't call it SLOs or educator effectiveness, we've been doing it. Our elementary teachers sit down and they look at MAP scores and MAP data, and middle school teachers look at the MAP data and say, where are these kids, what can we do in order to help them out? At the high school, they've been looking at, we've always looked at the explore plan and ACT data and saying, oh, this is what it says for college and career readiness, and this is where kids are currently reading, and how can we get better? So quite honestly, it's been there, we just haven't had a common K-12 way of looking at it, number one. Number two, we haven't had a common vocabulary, nor have we, number three, had a standardized form. Could matter or differ.
And now the whole state has one.
But yet, even within these student learning objectives, each outcomes, even stu, each student themselves will learn, students learn differently, students earn effort rates.
Yep.
So as long as they're progressing, so.
So that's the idea, is you want to create a valid and reliable tool that measures that along the way. It doesn't matter how exactly you get there, maybe not even when, but it just matters that you get there. So that's the whole personalization piece and letting kids choose how they best get at that. And in order for us to do that, we need to have those clear targets. And in order to have those clear targets, we need to learn from our mistakes, as a risk of taking, or as a result of taking risks. And we need to be able to do that. We need to know as teachers that we're safe, that if something flops, we can go back and do it again, and that we can make it happen in a better way, and that our students learn in different ways, and we need to try different approaches. And then, it's not one size fits all. We don't limit a world of one size fits all anymore, so we need to continuously instruct and not be that in education. So basically, you know, in summary, what we're looking at, and this is similar to what we talked about before, but in a fixed mindset is a performance environment. See if that looks familiar. In a performance environment, it's about, do it! I hope you did it right! That's no good, right? That doesn't, that doesn't send the message that in fact, we can all succeed together. In a learning environment, well, think about, let's talk about this first before we go at it. Let's, the three of us strategize and try this three different ways, and then let's get together and see which way actually worked the best, or didn't work the best, and do something a little bit differently than we did the first time. Because if we don't need to have the right answer right away, we're more willing to go out and do that, and try that out. And that's really what our message is to staff, and what the perspective we're trying to take with this whole piece. Just do it. Go out there and try it. Try it and see what happens. See where things go. Because if you don't try it, you can't study it, and if you don't study it, you can't make adjustments. And if you can't make adjustments, you can't meet the needs of students who you haven't been meeting. And that's really what it's all about.
Maybe we need to be hearing from more of our students. Okay, question, any other questions for Tony?
Well done.
That was a very good job.
Post this PowerPoint and your enthusiasm and passion for it, it's fantastic.
Any other questions? Just a, good comments?
Yeah.
While you're thinking, what can we do to support this change and to make sure more of this is happening in our district? What do you expect from us? What would you like the board to do? And I was serious about really listening to our students, because when Eileen and I did a few listening sessions, that was very powerful, and maybe this year, we need to do that as a full board. Go ahead.
I think just embracing the fact that this is, this is a model for change, you won't, I can tell you this right now, you will not see increased student results as a result of this by the end of this year. Period. If you see an increase in student results, it's not because of this, it's because of things that are already in place. So I, I think we need to be very cautious about that when we talk about the model and where it is. We're not, you're not going to see it manifesting in student results. It's a one, one-time thing. Does student learning increase just because you gave them an iPad? I mean, can we say that because we gave everybody iPads last year in the middle school, that's why our scores went up? No, you can't attribute it to that. It's, it's a longstanding process. So I guess my request to the board would be to just kind of hang with us and accept our mistakes, and understand that we're constantly improving, and that we believe in constant, in this continuous improvement model as, as, starting the conversation in order to stand up for it.
All right, thank you.
But it should show results.
It depends on what you define as results.
More proficiency?
Not this year. I would say not this year, because the measurements for our results come at the beginning of the year, and we're in flux with that whole piece. But I think when you look in the long run of being able to diagnose your issue.
But you're a change, usually it's chaos.
And how fast will you be able to detect the failure? As, not as a whole, but as what you're saying, as, as a, on a technique or a, as, or as three teachers getting together and saying, let's try this, will you know relatively fast?
We, I think, well, and again, it's looking at the, the formative assessment stuff as it's going along, and that's the purpose of those SLOs and those, those learning teams and the, and the coaches who are out there and working with teachers to facilitate that discussion, so.
Formative assessment is what?
The formative is the one that you don't necess, that you don't see, it's not the one.
It's not an bigger gift that goes into the bigger picture. It's one small assessment that it takes.
So let's say, for example, we do a three-day lesson on reading comprehension in third grade. We all as a class read individualized stories, and we all come up with projects to express the meaning of that story to our colleagues in the class. So some kids might do it presi, and some might do it on paper, and some might make a model or whatever else it may be. But as a teacher, I'm assessing the fact that you can comprehend what you just read. So what I'm looking for is, I'm diagnosing a very specific skill, reading comprehension in a particular instance that's controlled, that is limited in some way, shape, or form, maybe to a grade level or whatever else it may be, so that there's a controlled environment. That's diagnostic, right? It's before the cancer gets too big. We're looking and seeing what, what is currently there. So that will allow me and my teacher team to sit down and say, at this particular point in time, based upon these three days with this particular story, I've had students who have been able to tell me this, that, and the other thing. So our reading comprehension right now looks like it's whatever this is. And so in order for us to increase to eighty percent, what specifically do we see that wasn't manifested? And then you start drilling down and see, where did students struggle with that story? Well, the students struggled with that story because of word recognition or because of consonant recognition or because of sentence fluency. Or maybe it was an issue of vocabulary. And when you get to that level of specificity, that's why people are licensed as teachers at that particular grade level. Because someone who's not, wouldn't know how to diagnose that problem at that particular stage. And that's really, that's really the challenge is, the teachers need to be able to talk about that. They're the experts in the classroom. That's their expertise, that particular grade level. So my job is to make sure that I can get them the resources to have those discussions and then do something about what they discovered.
And when does this all go on? I mean, we're not taking teachers out of classrooms. And are we, in the days, now we don't have collaborative relief anymore, but we have full days.
Mm-hmm.
And are those days scheduled already?
Uh, the days are loosely scheduled, so there'll be some.
I mean, I know they're scheduled in the calendar.
Yep.
But, uh, is scheduled as far as what's going to go on in those days?
Mm-hmm. So I was probably going to come back at some point to the board with all that fun stuff too.
Okay.
We'll want to, we'll want to hear about that.
But I think as far as the way that it kind of ties in, because it does tie into educator effectiveness. SLOs are supposed to be representative of assessments that are local, not bigger ones. So we have to have valid, reliable, local assessments. In order to have valid, reliable, local assessments, we have to have clear learning targets. We spent last year doing the learning targets. So this year is going to be all about creating those specific assessments we're going to use to diagnose. So let's say, for example, third grade reading comprehension is something you want to target. How do we measure that? We need to measure it consistently and it needs to be valid and reliable. Meaning it measures what it's supposed to and we can continue to repeat it over time. So this year's efforts for those collaborative release days are saying, let's as a teacher team, just based upon what we know and what we have, create and agree to an assessment that looks at that particular skill set. Try it. And then we get together again, talk about what worked and what didn't work. So there are two ways that that happens. One are those collaborative release days that are all day. But then during common prep time throughout the school year. So every, every teacher team kindergarten through 12th grade has common prep in some way, shape, or form. Not necessarily every day, but it is at least once a week in most cases. So the idea is, in order to make that time meaningful, we can't talk about big global stuff. We have to talk about specifics and then say, what are we going to do around the day? So that's really what those, the big days are for, create the assessment. The in-betweeners are to be diagnostic and say, this is where kids are performing in alignment with that. How do we make a difference?
Well, wanted to say something?
You go back four slides.
Eileen wanted to say something?
Sure.
And then John.
I have to turn on my clicker.
There you go.
Which one, that's on?
Yep. Um, when you ask, what can the board do to support the effort? If you look at that, our teachers have been at the shifting, they've been at the performance fixed mindset. Think of when we went to school. I mean, it was very clear. And traditionally, and this district's been getting away from it. So this is not an indictment. But traditionally, in that performance fixed one, you, if you're teaching a, uh, a chapter in fourth grade math or reading that covers these targets, you'd go to your file cabinet, pull open the file cabinet, go to that folder, pull it out. And for the 30th consecutive time, you teach that because your performances are already set. Our teachers have been shifting from that over the past four years to more focused on, you know, you guys did a lot of focus on collaborative work with the teachers. You know, the, um, you, teachers are starting to recognize that there's that group by Q idea. You still have to have a mix of performance and learning, like Tony said. You still have assessments. But when we went to the Business Educator Summit, they said they want people with the skills to be able to work with another group of people and problem solve. And the, probably the hardest, or the most challenged are those kids that are in a fixed mindset to do that kind of interaction. So you're, it is a challenge for our teachers. And I think we need to recognize that it's not, and that's why we've done so much to try to bring them the support, which the board has supported, you know. So that our teachers aren't, I mean, left like, so they get frustrated. Is there still going to be frustration? I think so. If I was still teaching third and fourth grade and now after, this would be after 30-some years, pushing 40, and they said that I need to do it a different way, it's a challenge. But when someone says, we want you to do it a different way and here's how we're going to help you work through the process, that's what I've been seeing. So the board can support it by, it's okay for people to be a little bit frustrated as they work through it. Because they are. I mean, you read the stories in the newspaper at different districts and this is a, it's a culture shift. And our teachers have been answering that call really well. But I just wanted to point that out. And it is a blend. It's not one or the other.
Okay, Eileen and John?
Um, my just, my thought was just kind of like, you know, it kind of trickles down. It's not just change for the teachers, it's really change for the students. And they're going, you know, and, and in the way they grasp their own education. I mean, so they're going to have to work through some of these changes as well.
Absolutely.
John?
So my thoughts, I'll try not to get lost in my own thing here, but.
Reach out. Be good.
Yeah. But, you know, this is a kind of a shift in a paradigm of how to, how to look at stuff. And it's based on, on, you know, being a dynamic process. You know, you got, you're planning an execution and then of course, there's the evaluation of observation. And I mean, you're going through these things. I guess the question, kind of a two-part and maybe an interest in it is, is, um, does the, in a sense, the, the process or this, the, the shell of this idea, is that dynamic in itself? Because this, this whole paradigm is based on kind of the dynamics of, okay, we're trying to, we're trying to learn. We're trying to grow. It's not just, here's where the kid has to fit into in fifth grade, whatever, reading. It's, it's, we're trying to grow and learn and grow some more and, and continue to evolve. It's an evolving process. So can the, can the shell or the paradigm as this exists, can it, is it changeable itself? Is it somewhat dynamic itself? And is there avenue for feedback such as, you know, if we find out that, that for these teachers or the entire staff or parts of the staff or a particular, in a particular subject matter area for particular grade levels or something like that, the, the way, you know, kind of stem to stern, we're trying to implement this, it maybe needs to look a little different in a, in a particular subset of the district than it does in the rest of the district just based on age and subject matter or something like that. And, and as far as feedback goes, then are we, are we getting that feedback somehow? Whether it's through, well, however, I mean, one, one basic way of feedback down the road might be exit interviews, whether it's from staff or students or whatever. You know, I don't know if we have that avenue yet or not. But I know it's a lot of stuff out there.
Did you get the question?
Not really.
How are we getting feedback on the process?
Not, that wasn't, that wasn't really, no, let me, let me just, it was a multi, multi-piece.
Okay, give us one question that we can answer.
First piece is, can this, this paradigm that's evolving, is it, is a room for it to be changed or evolve itself?
Yep.
And then how do you, is there an avenue for that feedback so you can see how it needs to change?
I would say first.
You're welcome.
It's, it's already, thanks. It's already flexible. We're not doing this. We were already doing this. This is just a vocabulary. So we've already shown that we already, the Pliny Study Act model, it's super simple. It's something I talked about since you hired me as the principal years ago. Just think about it. Give it your best shot and then talk about what worked and what didn't. And act on it. Don't just put it in your file cabinet and save it for next year. What are you going to do about it right now? So I think that, that mentality has been in this district probably before I even got here as well. But I know it's been alive and well since I've seen it here. So this is just a way of framing it in a vocabulary piece. The feedback piece of it, this model gives us the leverage that we didn't have before by giving us a specific vocabulary around which to talk. And if you look on the, on the website part, and I didn't put it in here just because I didn't want to go too deep into it, but the Danielson model has four frames. And then you can see in each one of them, they're lettered. So that you can actually go, I mean, you can drill down to something very specific. Charlotte Danielson says it all starts with student engagement. So that's the three C. Boom, you go straight to three C and it's all about student engagement. Everything else triples from there. So when you're having conversations with teachers, you don't necessarily say, so how do you think that lesson went? You know, I noticed some kids in the back of the room were sleeping and other kids were very engaged. How are you going to, you know, you can talk very specifically from a particular strand. And it's much more diagnostic than it has ever been before. So the process is still, it's very similar to what we've done, but now we have this framework and this vocabulary.
When you mention that Danielson framework, you're referring to the teaching 2013, the four domains?
Yeah, Charlotte Danielson is the author and who has attributed to herself the Danielson model.
Okay, any other questions?
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, we look forward to follow-up. Thank you for helping us understand this dramatic change for our teachers. We appreciate that. And the belief thing will stick with me for a while because we have to get our kids to believe, don't we? For those kids, and we don't reach every kid. So if we're going to reach every kid. I do think there's a lot of value in looking at their educational opportunity through their eyes, so.
And help them develop the right mindset.
Help them develop that right, get that mindset. Thank you so much. Okay, next up on our agenda, we have comments from the school board regarding items. Agenda items for future consideration. Does anyone have any?
Well, just on what you just said, you know, some of us went to that senior class last year.
Yeah. And we listen to our students.
Then what happened? Was there any follow-up to that?
We can't discuss that. Do you want me to put an agenda item on about how we're going to connect with our students this year?
Yes, please.
Why don't we do that? Future agenda item, connecting with our students. Okay. Anyone else have anything? And if not, I do have one. If you have a chance to look through the WASP resolutions, that's online. I get one copy, but it's all online. And read through that. If this board could introduce a resolution if we want to, that would go through the whole process. I think Jonathan, are you our delegate this year? Who's our delegate this year?
I'm here, John.
You're, so then Jonathan would actually, I think, take, well, we would introduce it. He's on the committee. It would get vetted and maybe it would make it to the convention. So I just want to mention that if any of you see a need to add a resolution, let me know. And then we'll put that on the agenda for future consideration. That was one thing.